Recording in progress.
Now, we will call the Committee of the Home Meeting to order for Tuesday, March 1st. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Okay, Miller?
Here.
Rizzato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malay is absent. Yor?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 11 present.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rizzato is here, I'm sorry. And so is Connolly, sorry about that.
Should have 13.
We have 13, sorry.
Okay, item number two is a reminder to speak directly into the microphone for the broadcasting recording, and then also make sure to raise your hand when you want to talk, put it down when you're done, and if you would leave your mic muted while you're not speaking. Okay, item three is approval of the minutes for January 11th, 2022. Anybody have any corrections? Comments? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chancet, second by Solfah.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion passed, 13-0.
Thank you. Okay, item four is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
Okay, we'll go right on then to matters from the public. Item five, items not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anybody here, anything not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online?
There are two people online. If you want to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda, if you could raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman, Chancet?
Just one item, approvals, the Cow Executive Session, and it's from November 30th and Jan, I'm sorry, November 30th, 2021, and January 11th, 2022. I move, do we approve?
Second.
Motion by Chancet, second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Chancet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passed, 13-0.
Thank you. All right, up next is item seven, presentation on progress update on the water treatment plant. Don't worry, just as soon as we get this figured out, then we won't be doing it.
Okay, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Emily Conti. I've been the project engineer on site at the water treatment plant throughout this construction project. So, a review of the scope again, we're adding in this brine area addition to the existing treatment plant number two. There's a concrete driveway out front and then extending this roadway around that. There's a picture in the bottom of what that's going to look like. The progress from this last month, so the backwash storage tank was officially put online November 18th of 2021. We're still waiting for those level sensors inside the tank to measure levels of the backwash water in there. Some photos, those were still from the previous month. Treatment plant expansion, so this is that new brine area, the outside. Some of the brine equipment was installed and the plumbing is still ongoing inside that. The electrical installation is still ongoing. The windows were installed on the outside, you can see on the bottom two pictures, and then they're just working on finishing up that trim installation. Well 11 rehab, so the pump, column, pipe, and the motor was reinstalled this past month. The pump testing was completed on February 15th of 2022. The transducer is still going to be installed, they've got the PVC piping in place, they just need the electrician to install that. And well number 11 is back in service. The high service pump rehabs, so high service pump number one and number four were tested and back in service, there's pictures of both of those. And then high service pump number two and high service pump number five were both pulled for rehab. There's an estimated reinstallation and testing date set for May of 2022, and that rehab work is ongoing. Dualator number two rehab, painters have completed sandblasting of the detention tank, and then the inspection of the filter area is ongoing. There's ongoing coordination for the rehab work, including inspection and analysis of steel conditions and repair recommendations. And then the new valves, piping, and control panel are all delivered and stored onsite. The estimated completion date for this rehab is still set for April of 2022. Next steps. Ongoing brine building modifications, continue rehab for dualator number two, continue high service pump two and five rehab, begin well number 10 rehabilitation, and then the brine system hopefully online. Here's the anticipated construction schedule, everything is still set to be on schedule. And then any questions or comments?
So how bad did the tank look inside when they sandblasted that out? You know, that was one of the big questions, was how much work they thought they were going to have to do to that after they got it cleaned out.
That is a good question, and that analysis is ongoing. I will say that initially, the, what it looks like is the steel is not in great shape. So, the analysis is ongoing, they're doing the sandblasting currently, they've done it in the detention tank, we're still reviewing the filter area, and so we're still accumulating the information that we need to make final repair recommendations. It does seem like it is going to be a bit of an additional level of effort and was originally to bid schedule. We have the line items in there, we have unit costs, it's just those, the amount of repairs is going to likely be more than what was originally anticipated. So, by next month, we should have a better report for that and what exactly that means.
Because you'll fix that one, and then, once that one's done, then the other one gets done, right?
Correct, so we're, right now, we're going to anticipate that it's going to be similar repairs on the other one as the first one, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody online have any questions? Once again, thank you, and hope things keep going smooth, it's good to see the well back up and working.
Right, things get checked off the list here.
That's a good thing.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, which is approval of the Class D Restaurant All Liquor liquor license application for Revelry 675 located at 675 South River Street.
I'm going to step out.
Okay. The record reflected Alderman and Beck has left the proceedings for item number eight.
I have the sound. The Batavia Police Department completed background checks for liquor license applicant Revelry 675, the owner is Shuki Moran, no issues or problems were noted. Is anybody here from 675 Revelry? No, any discussion? No discussion, I would like to make a recommendation, a city council approval of Class D 1 liquor license application for Revelry 675 at 675 South River Street in Batavia. Motion by Rizzato, second by Connolly, roll call.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck? Not here. Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed, 13-0.
12, and two absent. Okay, let the record reflect, Alderman and Beck has returned to the meeting for item number nine. Item nine is ordinance 22-11, amending official zoning map for a planned development overlay district, 470 to 490 North Randall Road, Mashuka Burger LLC applicant. And who has that one?
Drew?
Drew?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, tonight's agenda, we have two items related to the Culvers development. There are two ordinances, the first being a, a, an ordinance that would amend the zoning map to create a planned development overlay district for the 470 and 490 North Randall Road properties. It would basically create some zoning relief to allow some shared parking arrangements in the location of parking, as well as some modifications from certain primer landscape standards and some other minor zoning relief for landscape. The second ordinance would be a conditional use permit to operate a Culvers restaurant at 470 North Randall Road. Both of these items went through the Plan Commission on February 16th and received positive recommendations during the hearing. The commission did review with the applicant, the arrangements for the proposed drive-through, as they noted in the memo, the drive-through does conform with the zoning code, does provide eight additional parking spaces for pickup of orders, and the applicant explained that in certain conditions, if there was, at peak times, that they could deploy mobile ordering for ordering, or taking of orders, and there are two orientations for all other times. The, the overall, the Plan Commission was very receptive to the proposal, they'd feel it was a well-designed project and was appropriate use of this given location, and they did feel that the modifications that were being granted, for the most part, were necessary and were basically the minimal requested. Essentially, even the primer landscape area relief, for example, that what's being requested actually is a reduction of what was already on the site as pavement, so there's additional landscape being created. So, the Plan Commission did vote, by a vote of six to zero, to approve both the design review, subject to the conditions of these two ordinances tonight, and they did recommend approval of the proposed zoning map overlay and of the proposed conditional use. So, staff does recommend approval of each two ordinances before you sign.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Any comments? I will say, Abby, go ahead.
Did our, so it says that the landscaping will increase from what's currently there, did our, did our requirements change since Fridays went in, or was an exception granted back when Fridays was built and this development went in?
So, when we adopted the zoning code in 2010, we did not have, basically required landscape areas, we just had building setbacks, so that's where, basically, the difference in application of the code arose, that we didn't have that standard before, now we do, and they're asking for relief that is not too far from what was on the site.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of this, except the one thing that I didn't think we allowed electronic message boards, but apparently we do, and obviously, we can't change anything about that now, but I would love to not have them in the future, because I just think that, again, just the look is just...
Do you mean, in the city as a whole, not having any message boards? Because we do have them at our fire stations.
In the, like, the retail, or the Randall Road?
Retail areas?
Yeah, I just, I'd like, if anybody else wants to talk about it, I'd love to talk about it at some point, because I'm just not a big fan of them personally.
I guess the one comment that I was happy that the way it was laid out was that the exit from the drive-through was as far away as it could be from Mill, you know, that it's not coming out right at the end, because that's, has been historically a problem that we've had in other places, where the exits come out, just south of there, there's one that doesn't get used at all because it's too close to the street. So, I'm glad that the way this one is laid out is in a different location, hopefully that will work better for that, that street.
I'll join Mark on that. I, I remember, I don't remember if it was here, or if it was back in Las Vegas, that I got into a car accident, and I can remember it being a question when I filled out paperwork, like, were there any electronic message boards? Like, it went through the stage of, like, this set of possible distractions on the street that could have led to the accident, and it stands out every time we talk about it, I'm like, oh yeah, they asked, they asked me about that, like, road safety, like, so I'd be curious to know, just kind of what the updated, you know, look from the police department, public safety is on, on those close to the roadway.
Thanks.
Just, just so the council's aware, we do have a pending amendment that's been requested, a text amendment for expansion of our electronic signs where we allow them, so shortly, you will have an opportunity to talk about that very directly.
There's your discussion.
Can you tell which way I'm leaning?
I don't have the slightest. Why don't you send me a message? Okay, any other comments? Anybody online have any comments about this? Okay, if not, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 22-11, amending official zoning map for a planned development overlay district, 470 to 490, North Randall Road, Mashuka Burger LLC applicant.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Motion passed, 13-0.
All right, thank you. Next is item ordinance 22-12, conditional use permit for drive-through restaurant in a general commercial district, 470 North Randall Road, for Culvers Mashuka Burger LLC applicant.
Second.
Okay, anybody have any more comments before we vote on this one? Is the applicant here? Is he here? Did you want to come up and say anything tonight? Okay, just to, I think most of us are familiar with Culvers, but not you yet, so...
My name is Michael Smith, I'm one of the three owners of the Culvers on Randall Road. Just wanted to say, if anyone had any questions, I'm here to answer them, and we're really excited to be in Batavia.
We're happy to have one. Samples cement, mick. Super happy.
This is a, this is a franchise, correct?
Yeah, franchise.
Do you own other franchises?
In Skokie, and other two business partners, Katie and Susan, have six others.
Very experienced.
And you know what you're doing. Excellent.
Welcome.
Yep.
Hi, thank you.
Look forward to seeing the place full.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be there.
Unfortunately, I think I'll probably be there too much. Well...
You, you can come twice a day, it's okay.
No, I can't, no I can't. Okay, well, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
And second is...
Okay, thank you.
Soffa.
Okay. Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion passed thirteen zero.
All right, thank you. And that'll be on our next city council agenda, so if you want to come, uh, next Monday night, if you wanted to come and say anything at the council level, we'll put that on the regular agenda. All right? Thank you. Okay, up next is, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash ten, uh, amending ordinance seventeen dash sixteen, granting variances for a temporary parking lot at one eleven to one seventeen North River Street. This is our city-owned parking lot on the other side of this building, right across the river from us.
Yes. So this was, uh, granted a conditional use, uh, back in twenty-seventeen, that had a five-year term to it. Um, that five-year term has now, uh, lapsed, and, uh, we do have in the ordinance the ability to extend that for an additional five years, uh, for ten years, and essentially the reason for the temporary, uh, uh, state of the parking lot is because the parking lot does not comply with all of our required setbacks, landscape islands, and so on and so forth. So our recommendation is to go ahead and extend this for an additional five years. Uh, once that period is over, then we would have to either, um, make the parking lot comply with all of our zoning ordinance requirements, or hopefully, uh, the property would be under a state of redevelopment for, uh, additional development in our downtown. So that is our recommendation, is to extend it additional five years via this ordinance, uh, to essentially allow the status quo to continue.
Nick?
If, hopefully, uh, I'm with you, but what happens in five years if, what, what, what do we have to put into it to continue this if, if there's not a redevelopment in five years?
Yeah, so we would have to put in landscape islands where there are none, uh, you know, we require landscape islands every ten, uh, spaces, um, there are some setbacks that don't comply on some of the parking spaces, and anywhere it's not curbed would have to be curbed, so, um, there are a few things that would have to comply. It's not, it's not a great amount, but there are a few things that would have to be brought into compliance.
Going back to the time when we did this, it was try to do it, you know, as frugally as possible, and hopefully, you know, be ready after five years, now hopefully after ten years, to move this on to somebody else's ownership and have, you know, a development done on it, or at least turned into something different than a parking lot.
Yeah, about five years, one click.
I...
Did.
I don't know if any, if everybody heard, but before this meeting, I talked about, you know, the notification the other day that it was five years ago that we started doing cow meetings live on VATV, and that's already just flown by. Okay, if there's no other comments, I will, uh, reluctantly make the motion that we approve ordinance twenty-two dash ten, amending ordinance seventeen sixteen, granting variances for a temporary parking lot at one eleven to one seventeen North River Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion passed thirteen zero.
All right, and that can go on consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
All right, up next is item twelve, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-five dash R, authorization of a master service agreement with Tri-R Systems Incorporated. Alderman Chanset?
Uh, thank you, uh, so this is, um, for an MSA with, uh, Tri-R Systems Incorporated. Uh, back a few years ago, twenty-seventeen, uh, we started, um, on a path for a factory talk SCADA system that is, um, for, uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, water division, um, basically it's a, it's a, it's a warning system if there's something, uh, going wrong with any of, of the systems. Uh, we're in the process of integrating, uh, those warning systems right now. This will be for the water, uh, treatment plant, it'll be for the water towers, um, as well as lift stations, um, and this basically, um, lets us, um, move forward with the project. So, um, am I leaving anything out?
I can't think of anything. We, we have used Tri-R in the past, um, they did work with our previous SCADA system, they come highly recommended, and, uh, this is just an opportunity to formalize an, an agreement with them with, for terms and, uh, also to protect our data.
Uh, for, and any additional discussion?
Yeah, Dan, this is Mark.
Sure.
Um, I'm sure I've asked this before, and I'll ask it probably every single time, these are all, um, separated from the internet, right? These are all air gapped, so that there's not, as people worry about cyber warfare, these are not things that would be accessible by a clever hacker?
Well, that's part of the reason for this agreement, to make sure that they stay that way.
Okay.
Keep a very tight rein on our SCADA system, uh, with very limited ability to get to it from the outside. So this helps formalize that agreement, so they understand, you know, what they should and shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
Um, it's typically, uh, the IS department who manages the security, they're kind of working on the inside of the SCADA system, not allowing or setting up access, uh, for remote, uh, users to get in or out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other stone? Good?
So Alderman, Alderman can't shut off other Aldermans' electrical power. Yeah. It's not my skill set anymore.
But that, that is actually a good question. We do have, uh, some new people that have joined the council, I'm not sure if we ever really talked about what SCADA systems are. What, uh, what are the most common types of, of early warnings we get from these systems?
You know, I would say, um, uh, if a pump for a lift station is not working, or the water tower level gets a little bit low, uh, they'll get, um, alerts in the middle of the night if need be, and be able to come in and determine what the problem is before the public would know about it. That's it, probably the simplest answer I could give you.
If there's no, uh, additional discussion, I would, uh, move that we, uh, approve this MSA with, uh, Tri-R Systems Incorporated.
Second, Yor.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Our clerk, please call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passed thirteen zero.
All right, thank you.
Consent.
Okay. Thank you. Um, up next would be ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen, amending title eight, chapter one, articles A and B of the municipal code related to renewable generation facilities. Alderman Serone?
Yes, we talked about this, uh, last couple of weeks, uh, it, it is, uh, necessary for us to, uh, comply with CIGIA regulations, to modify certain sections.
I'm not, I don't want to interrupt, I just want to say I'm stepping out for this one.
Gotcha. We have to modify certain sections of our, our code, so we kind of went through the, the lingo last week and gave Gary direction, and this is, uh, what he came back with, so, anything else to add to that, Gary?
Yeah, thank you, um, for the last several weeks, we've been talking about the policies. So CIGIA requires us to adopt, uh, net generation, I'm sorry, a, a self, self-generation policy and an interconnection policy, and those are the policies that you approved at last week's cow meeting, that will be coming to city council next week. But in order to implement those policies and get them into the city code, we actually have to do an ordinance, and that's what this ordinance does, is it, it, it modifies the language within, existing language within our code, um, I've given you a redline version of all the changes, basically wiping out what we had and then install, um, inserting new language. And the new language that we're inserting is consistent with the two policies that you just passed, um, at the committee meeting. So, jumping back to really the clean version, we're redoing section K there in, uh, title eight, chapter one, um, where we define renewable, we define what the system size is, we talk about how the energy will be measured, and finally we talk about net billing. And then we are also going to modify article B, uh, which talks about the interconnection, and again, that requires a definition, uh, who's eligible to interconnect, uh, the codes and regulations that they have to abide by, and then finally the same language that's in the policy, and that the terms and conditions for interconnections, uh, shall be set forth in the customer-owned renewable generation facility interconnection agreement, which you also approved last week. So, that's my summary. You guys have any questions?
I don't, I appreciate the redline, and it makes it so, so nice.
But you ask staff, and we always try to provide the redline and the, and the, and the clean version, so...
Yeah, when you read just a clean version, you don't remember what was in there to begin with, it makes it almost impossible to compare.
Now, this is clear and what we had talked about, so I'm good. Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Anyone online? Well, without any, uh, questions or concerns, I will go ahead and make a motion to recommend the city council ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen, amending title eight, chapter one, articles A and B of the municipal code related to renewable generation facilities.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Motion passed, eleven, one, with one abstaining.
Okay. And then we will move on to project status, and Alderman Vogelsinger has returned.
Thank you. Um, so we're still waiting to hear whether the governor will extend the disaster declaration beyond February fourth. Uh, if he does, we, uh, will continue to have hybrid meetings, but if he does not, uh, the Open Meetings Act will require us to meet in person, except that a person can participate either through video or audio, uh, for the following reasons, personal illness or disability, um, employment purposes, or the business of the public body, or the third is a family or other emergency. Also, just want to let everyone know that I will be on vacation next week, and so for the city council meeting and committee of the hall meetings next week, Anthony will be, uh, representing the administration department in this chair. Um, in community and economic development, we are excited to see the progressing construction on the Chipotle and Starbucks buildings off McKee Street and Randall, they're going vertical at this point. Um, signage has now been installed on all of our properties that we're listing through, Lagesty Mulder Brokerage, those would be, um, some properties, uh, like the one on, uh, North Water Street, as well as some of the properties that we have out west, um, and so they are vigorously marketing those properties for sale. Police Department, um, uh, is going to be, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners will have its regularly, regular monthly meeting on March eighth, and on the agenda will be the hiring of an officer from our certified lateral secondary eligibility register. Um, the command staff attended the monthly meeting with the Kane County Chiefs of Police Association on February seventeenth, and the main topic of discussion was Kane County State's Attorney's presentation on a new vertical prosecution structure for the State's Attorney's Office. The new structure will ensure that an experienced assistant State's Attorney is in charge of each of the major criminal prosecution courtrooms, and additionally, a team of experienced assistants will take over the felony review process, so that the State's Attorney's Office, which would lead, uh, for the State's Attorney's Office, which should lead to better guidance for law enforcement on matters of felony crimes. Um, in Public Works Engineering held a kickoff meeting with V three to start the process of studying the design, of, of study design for the Carriage Crest Stormwater Outfall Project. Uh, they continue to work with Fermilab and the Army Corps of Engineers to finalize the documents in preparation for the Mahoney Creek Tributary Project. And, um, as Howard Chason mentioned, they've been working with, uh, information systems to assist water and wastewater through upgrades and modifications of the SCADA system. And another project that Public Works is working on with our information systems department are the remodeling of, and, and pulling of new cable here in the city hall building this year. And Electric Cruze are making preparations to resume overhead reconstruction project in the Highlands area. I think that's about all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to item fifteen, other. Does anybody have any others tonight?
Yeah, Warren, a couple of residents have just expressed some concerns to me now that the weather's been kind of going up and down, the condition of the parking lot over there at the Seven Eleven and Rosati's, and the constant overflowing of the garbage cans. They've just complained to me about, one, the giant massive potholes, and two, just the way it looks as on the main corner of town entering town. Um, I'm not sure who owns the property or who maintains it, but just wanted to bring, like, three different residents, but I brought those concerns up to me.
You bet, we'll get code enforcement over there.
Yeah, we, we've, uh, already been on top of that situation, um, there was some minor patching that was done, uh, by the property owner, uh, but it is something that is a constant thing that we're getting on them about, um, there's been some, I'll call bad tenant landlord relationships going on over there too, so, um, you know, we're trying to get on it to get the landlord to get it done, and, um, they're kind of dragging their feet on things, but we're, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Dan, I see you got your hand up? Go ahead.
Uh, thanks, a couple of things, uh, for anyone who is unfortunate enough to follow my, my Facebook, uh, it is littered with, um, all the different comedy, uh, stand-up things that I travel around the country to go see, and I will tell you, it made me so happy to cross off one of the names from my list at the Comedy Vault downtown Batavia this weekend, uh, Rachel Feinstein, it was a fantastic show, I brought an out-of-towner, uh, to come see it, and she remarked, uh, what a wonderful time she had downtown Batavia, uh, visiting, uh, restaurants, and she, she said, "We, we don't need to go to Madison anymore if they keep booking all these wonderful acts." It just made me really proud, uh, to be a Batavian. Uh, another thing, I'm going to need some, um, assistance over the next probably six weeks. Um, I did find out this evening, uh, that surgery I had about eight years ago on my neck, uh, has, uh, has, uh, kind of failed, so I'm going to be having, uh, spine surgery, uh, on March seventeenth. I will not be able to attend, uh, meetings for probably about, uh, four to six weeks while I am in recovery, so I, I do need, um, I do need your guys' assistance, so, thank am in recovery, so I do need, I do need your guys' assistance, so thank you very much.
Sorry to hear that.
Sorry to hear that, Dan, that...
Oh, I'm going for a high score with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah, okay. Well, if you need to, we can set up, you know, the little Zoom one, we can mount it like on a hospital bed or whatever we need to do for you. Yeah, we can set that up. We've got the tech skills here.
For sure, I definitely, I definitely appreciate that. And I remember last time around, recovery went a lot faster than I was expecting. This is a little bit more complex because it is levels two, three, four, five, and six, which means when I'm downtown Chicago, driving on the diagonals, I will have to physically turn my body to look at the traffic behind me. That's a lot of fusion happening in my neck.
Well, I have an aunt that had all those done, so I know, I saw what she went through, so as long as you got a good doctor doing it, you'll be fine.
Indeed, we have world-class medicine just down the street. Thank you.
Alan?
Your Honor?
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to share with the council. The last few weeks, I have been, I don't know, I guess I'll use the word mobbed by the fans of the Batavia High School sports programs, because the school district has announced plans to, maybe Alan, you can describe more, what they're going to rebuild the Batavia High School football field. Can you describe that a little?
Well, they're going to, I think it's staged, and I believe first year is going to be new stands on the home side and a new press box.
I think the lights as well.
And the light poles, yeah, and lights will be changed. That's as far, as far as I know, I haven't seen the plans yet, so I really can't comment on exactly what's going to happen, but I do know that at least the first three games have already planned to be away, and the possibility if anything in the supply chain goes wrong or anything else happens, it could be more than three games to start the season off next. So as soon as the last track meet is over this year, the bulldozers come in.
So I wanted the council to kind of hear that, because that's kind of out there in town, and there's a big fan club of that whole program, so everybody knows about it. Our community development department under Mr. Buning has been very, very supportive of this whole thing, and I know they have met now several times with the architects and the engineers who are overseeing this, and we're trying to get this thing staged so that by the date that Alderman Wolf just mentioned, we will be in a position to say, "Okay, we can open this up and you guys can get going." That's the, that's kind of the goal here and the target. So I probably have had ten to fifteen mothers, fathers, fans talk to me in the last couple of weeks about, "I hope the city doesn't get into this thing and mess it up somehow or get it out of the way." But I want you all to know, if you run into any of your constituents down here, we're trying hard to get this thing prepped and prepared and working with them on whatever. And I know Scott's preparing to have his team watch it with quite regularity as to, do we see something maybe that shouldn't be going this way, or put here, or whatever have you. So we're going to be kind of watching that one a little bit closer than maybe something else we, normal construction. We just want to make sure, because we don't need a whole bunch of fans next, when it would be October, November, when the season's going, and suddenly they can't get on the field to the game, or we delayed it, so we had to go someplace else and we lost that game. I don't need that, neither do you.
We'll just annex Geneva and use their stadium.
It's already, it's already pending.
The other thing I wanted to share with you, as you know, I have these roles with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, the Council of Mayors, where I'm the chairman. And, you know, and I'll call it rough conversation that the mayors are having at the moment, as all of us may remember, three, four, five, six months ago, there was all this announcement of all this money that was getting thrown into the pipeline to do all kinds of wondrous things, and we were all being suggested that we need to look at what we wanted to add for our town, and I know we've had some conversations about it, and we've got some ideas. I would tell you, however, in the last couple of weeks, given what has happened in the national, international arena, there's a lot of people who are scratching their head and, you know, beginning to wonder how much at the end of the day, given what's now happening in Northern Europe, how much we're going to be able to fund here in the immediate future, that there may be, have to be some significant diversion of monies and personnel and whatever have you. So I don't want to cool anybody's haunches here, but that, I just want you to be alert that this may be something that has, will have kind of a slowdown. I don't want to use stop or negative, because I don't think that's the case, but it may very well be something that kind of slows things down, and there won't be the vigor and anticipation and strong push to get things on the, on the road and projects started, because I think there's some real concerns about what is or is not going to be able to be done here with whatever monies are going to be available, and the feds are really, I think the congressmen and everybody else have all kind of stopped right now and have said, gee, you know, maybe we shouldn't do it. The other thing I wanted to add to you on this, kind of the world of politics above us, is, is that there's been a redrawing of maps of the state legislators, the state senators, and the congressmen. And I will, I jokingly have been told by several people that Batavia seems to be quote-unquote "the prime target." Now, I guess the Democrats drew these maps, and, you know, we don't necessarily have any history of being real strong Democrat or real strong Republican, but they drew some maps. I, and what's disturbing to me about these maps is, is that they put them out, but they don't put a district number on them. You got, you really got, I mean, I've had the staff and Mike Cannon and a couple others working with me here regularly, trying to figure out, "I wanted to get together a set of maps," and I'm still working on this, "that I can send to each one of you so you can see where the state senators and the state representatives are, and the congressman." Now, the congressman, it sounds like that's going to be a really interesting situation, because there's, there's eleven, I think, running in the Republican ticket, and part of Batavia is, I think Batavia's in three different congressional districts under the new maps that are in there. In fact, we even have, and I can't pronounce his name, we even have the congressman that's the congressman from up around Hanover Park and Schaumburg, and that is Rajah, whatever.
Krishnamurti.
Pardon?
Krishnamurti.
Yeah, okay. He's, he's now got the northeast corner of Batavia. He's up there with the gas station at Fabian and Washington Avenue, and then he's got a row of houses behind it, and then he's got a couple of things going out Fabian Parkway, but that's all he's got within us, but he's one of our congressmen. Now, maybe this will work out, we'll have a third congressman in town, and maybe this will do something for us. So one that's more interesting to me is the state representative drawing that they did, because, you know, I feel that Murra Hershauer has really done a nice job in her first term in office, but she doesn't have much of Batavia left in her district. They drew the map, so the map, her district stops, I think it's ten houses south of her house on Viking Drive, and anything on Pine Street, which is up the hill to the north, that's all in somebody else's district. And I'm still trying to get a set of maps that we all can see and understand as to who is our congress, or who is our state representatives now. And Linda Holmes, who is the Democratic minority whip, now is, has a large portion of Batavia in her district. And the other one that's picked up a large portion of Batavia, which wasn't there before, was Keith.
Keith Wheeler.
Wheeler from the Kendall County. He's now got a big chunk of Batavia in his district. And so we've got a whole bunch of kind of new people. I don't really have anything negative to say about any of them, but it's just real interesting, they obviously were trying to get something done in the political process, that if there is ever an example of gerrymandering, I think this may be one of the better ones ever done. But I just wonder where all this is, what's, what's its intentions for, and we shall see what we shall see. The other interesting thing is they've moved the primary way back into June, so that when the primary's over, there's going to be a shortened election season between June and the first Tuesday and November. You know, normally the primary's always been in March, but now we've taken almost three months off of that calendar and put it into the primary season. So, a lot of politics on the street these days, and I just thought, I wanted to share the, my observations with the City Council. I've been careful here not to say one thing, anything bad about any one of them, but I'm just saying that if you, you had a favorite candidate and you voted for that person in the last election, you be prepared for this set of maps that I'm going to be sending in, because you may find out that that person's no longer your rep or your congressman or whatever we have here. So, we also went through quite a run, and I represented the Kane County mayors at the meetings with the Kane County Board, in which they had to reapportion the 24 seats on the Kane County Board by population. Problem they have is the census is a little bit weak, I think, in the opinion of a lot of people. So anyway, they had to use that census to draw the maps, and so Batavia got adjusted in that pretty good. Dave Brown did win out as far as he has most of Batavia now as his district, so he has, knows us, and I'm personally pleased by that. But there's just some, some real interesting things happening in the election process today, unlike anything I've ever seen before.
And they all have to run again, right?
Yeah, there's, Dave's got to run after two years.
They had, they had to go into a drawing, and there were 24 of them, and there were even numbers and odd numbers, and I think the odds got the two-year term and the evens got the four-year term. So Dave just ran, but he's got to run now for another two-year term, and then he'll have a four-year term. And there's 12 on the, or, yeah, 12 on the board that'll have that same legacy. So I haven't heard from anybody that tells me they're running against him, but I mean, that's just kind of what, what's happening. But given the world that we live in, I think it's maybe my job here to kind of keep you a little bit informed as to how the politics are working in the county and in the state legislature and other places, because there's been some real interesting moves done here, and I'm not sure where, how it's all going to come out, but I guess we'll just have to wait and see.
Well, I'm hopeful.
Your Honor, they also changed all the maps around for the court districts as well. Second district, third district, I mean, first district, Silco County, but good luck trying to figure out where all the other districts are right now.
You know, what's made, what amazes me is they drew these maps and they put them out, and they didn't put any numbers or any identification on these maps. And so you, or our staff has been upstairs trying to pull these things off the computer, and we're not sure what we're getting here. I mean, they, they've almost like they're trying to make it very difficult for anybody to really honestly understand, and my only intention when I started this was, was to give the 14 members of the City Council an honest view of what was going to happen and with the new maps, because there's some significant things.
Get it figured out before people start voting for who they're supposed to or not supposed to vote for.
I just sent everyone a copy of what the county clerk has published on their website. It's really fine print to try to read where the boundaries are, so.
The only good thing I can think of is that there's going to be three months less of ads, so that's probably the only good part about that. One more thing I didn't want to go through tonight without saying that there, there is one great thing that came out of last weekend downstate, and that was the fact that Batavia got its first girls' state wrestling champion.
That's awesome.
Sidney Perry. So, I'm going to get with the mayor and find out about what we can do for that.
They're certainly going to have her come down and give her a proclamation and have her talk, have Alan talk about her, if nothing else.
And to be fair, she's actually a two-time state champion.
Right, this is the second time, but last time was with the club.
I understand.
Right, and the other thing that's really cool is she's actually the first state champion, because her match was the first one of the day, so she was the first state champion in girls' wrestling, so I think it's...
She found out in the grand, she found out in the grand march that she was going to be the first match, and she didn't have her uniform on.
Right, the stories and stuff in the videos of her and Coach Bear are just great, you know. It's just a really wild thing to have happen and, you know, have that be part of Batavia, so I thought that was pretty cool.
For sure.
Question before we move on, Alan. The mayor brought up the, what the school's planning on doing. We had requested kind of a meeting with the school to see what's going, any progress?
I haven't heard back, so I'll reach out again.
Thank you.
Well, I only brought up about the high school field.
No, but they're doing a lot of things.
I know that. I know you wanted to ask the question, but I, you know, the pressure has been on me the last few days about, they're all worried about getting that field done, so. And I really feel very confident that Scott and his team have that well under control, and they know what they need to have, and...
I don't think it'll be a permit or anything else that holds it up, I think it'll be supply, if anything. Okay. Tom?
I know our meeting, I know where you've been trying to have a joint meeting with the park district.
Yes, when I contacted them about having a joint meeting, they suggested that we consider hiring Hitchcock Design Group to do a report on the pros and cons of impoundment versus no impoundment on the dam side, that dam channel. So, I, we don't have a proposal from Hitchcock Design Group yet as to what that extra study would cost, and so I wanted to have that information for you before I presented that. But that was their suggestion, was to come together to go over what, to analyze what, you know, the experts say are the pros and cons of doing it either way, since this group was evenly split on impoundment versus no impoundment.
We're just going to keep the land, this is the thing that bothers me the most about the whole deal, is, you know, we're going to have another study, we're going to have another, and then we're not, we're still not going to make a decision on what we're going to do moving forward. By the time we finally get to make a decision, the dam won't be there, because it'll have to destroy itself.
Yeah, I sure hope we don't miss out on the opportunity for a million dollars in funding to remove the dam.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have an executive session for setting the price of land for sale. I can get a motion to go on executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by you, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Motion passed thirteen zero.